Okay, welcome to the school board solitudes committee meeting. I sent out an agenda on Monday. We're going to do it in the next little minute if we can be very free because there's been some suggestions like changes.
Yeah, I think that's okay. I wanted to make sure that we were giving priority to looking at the month's report which is number three here because I know that this is the last one that you are contracted to come to see us at the facilities meeting. And so this is our last opportunity here for the term of our contract to cover. I can afford this, we're now that we have a second report, we have a lot more content to go over. So I wanted to make sure that we're giving priority to this and I don't want to coddle that conversation. So that was my suggestion is that we move number three to number one.
Is this last meeting?
No, it's not, and I'll come back, we won't be able to come back.
He's got one more for the board and then contractually he will include his new reports. But if we want to do that.
Happy to come back.
But that would be an additional?
No.
So I guess what I was thinking was, because Dorie didn't let me know she wanted to move that forward, I feel like this is important to start out with. Part of the reason being, last meeting we kind of had a lengthy remarks afterwards, which appeared to be based in certain misunderstandings about what was going to be in the new building. And so I feel like this is, we should do that, number one. And then go ahead and leave votes, support, this is the THP element, this will get there as well, to number two. And then that we keep input to Mike Ruschley's drawings after that because as we think about next steps of the work of the committee, Mike asked us two months ago for input and the committee really did not have much chance to give input because they didn't see those blogs the right before the meeting. There hasn't been another opportunity to give input at the public meeting. So I wanted to leave that on and then just switch the orders of switch votes to.
All right.
I moved the views to up.
The month's report?
The notes report. Oh.
Is this to move it up to spot two versus?
Yeah, I'm not against moving it to two, I'm just, I just, yeah, so what would you be pushing?
Did you, did you say spot one?
Yeah.
Spot one.
One, two, so you don't want to hear about the square footage.
Well, it sounds big, I don't want to hear about it.
Four, five, six, seven, those. One, two, three, four, five, all right. So we're going to move that first and then we're going to go to square footage and then we're going to go to Ruschley's report. Now I put time frames in and people had said that they could operate within those time frames. So we're starting out with you, Mike, now you're missing your sidekick, so.
Yeah.
Oh, is that now the working? So one thing I just wanted to remind everybody of is this is a working committee. I don't think the purpose, we only have a meeting once a month, is to just listen to a report that we've already been sent. We want to get an overview of that and then we want to be able to have time for discussion because as everybody on the committee knows, you know, part of the purpose of the committee is to make purpose, is to create a improvement plan so we can see that up against, you know, makes and decisions, so that the school board can make decisions about how to incorporate. And so anyway, I want to just, you know, not having this be a presentation. So if you want to give us an overview, do you want to give an overview of the additional items that you've added?
I'm open to doing it from the fact of the meeting or if someone has specific.
You have some additional information.
Yeah.
Would you just give us an overview of that?
Sure. So do you want to show it or do you want to just speak?
So let's, I feel like we're a little over the door. Is your, is your contractor here to speak?
Tip, as a tip.
No. So because of that, I would like to say, even though I want, I want to hear from votes and THP, but because he is not here, then I think maybe we can flip it. I just do not want this meeting to go by without a hearing from votes and from THP.
Yeah, I think everybody's in agreement. All right, so let's go back to square footage analysis, which is led off by Mike and.
I'm trying to speak to it.
Okay, cool.
I think, can I start and then you have a lot to talk about in your piece? So you can stay there, Leslie, but I'm, I'm going to tell everyone, I put a document in and other items, bundles, comments on facilities. And so the very first piece is about this. So I want to, I lift it, so I feel like I know what I'm talking about. So I'm going to call this the OFCC plan. Because it was an OFCC project, $35,594.90. Because it was an OFCC project, we qualified for ALP, which is Expedited Local Partnership Program. The district wants to get a credit of 26% of that cost. Way that works is you approve the whole thing and then down the road you get a credit back from the OFCC. Because it's an OFCC project, they use enrollment projections done by Future Think, which we have and have been made public multiple times and are on our website. Those enrollment projections then are used to develop square feet for the building. So this was a K-12. The total square feet was 105, 123. Our current square footage is 121, 553. So that was a reduction in square footage. So a couple reasons for that. The most obvious being when you go from two campuses to one, you do not need to duplicate all of the spaces. It's also because the OFCC uses enrollment projections to be pretty lean. It was a lean plan. So when school districts are putting an issue on the ballot and they want more space, for example, in auditorium, or they want to make the building, you know, zero, that's not the term. They want to do geothermal, they want to add a second gymnasium. Those are all what's called locally funded initiatives or LFI, which we'll hear people talk about. That's a way they can add square footage to the plan, but it comes at an additional cost that the state will not contribute to. During the master facilities planning, we discussed all of those. There were probably eight different LFI's we discussed. And because we had much criticism about the cost, we were trying to go lean. So it's not that we didn't have the spaces that we needed. When you have a K-12, it's just configured differently. So with Mike, and he's going to go over this because he has provided this list, you know, he can talk about the differences between his renovations that he sat down with Megan and Jack and I, and the staff have seen them and have given input, some positive and some not positive. But he sat down with us and made these modifications. Because if we're looking at renovations, we now are not tied to OFCC restrictions in terms of x square footage per projected enrollment student. And so in my document, and you can read it at your leisure, I tried to go through and say, here is why we did what we did in the 2021 plan. So when people talk about it now, it's not to say that that was such a special plan. I mean, it was what it was and I've outlined why I advocated for it. But I want everyone to understand, because there's more square footage, it doesn't mean that what I've heard, this is the Taj Mahal, or this costs mega millions of mega billions. Hey, honestly, this is the bare minimum that other places do. So I'm going to advocate for my students throughout this whole process. I feel like I've been too quiet for too long. Mike, now I just want to set that stage so Mike can go through his drawings. And when he gets there, this is based upon his drawings compared to the report, because we don't have any drawings, to the report for the OFCC plan in 2021 at 105,000 square. Sit your, there you go.
Well, yeah, that was, thank you, Dr. Wilkens. Right, so let's start, so this is a question from a question received by the committee, which is, okay, you provide us these drawings. How does that compare to what was on the ballot previously? And so the request was, can you kind of break it down by area and give us a comparison? So I came up with these 21 areas of comparison as a lens to compare it to. On the right side, it says a 2020 master plan and this is about this September 20 version. So this is the version as presented to the committee at that meeting. Everything down that column is a matter of fact. Like, I can go, you know, the drawings are attached, I can query on square footage, I can count the number of classrooms, and we could all do that together as an exercise. That's just, we had it all up, what they come down to. The column on the left, that says a 2021 K-12 plan, that is my professional judgment on what was, the one, the one matter of fact that I know for certain is the 105,000. The rest is my best view of what it would be. And the basis document, the state has a square footage template for a 3K as well. And it is, I can make this available to anyone on the committee. It is section by section, area by area of all the different parts of pieces of the building. This is something that you have to do when you're designing a project. You go pick every space, you go through that process. What this does have is this has an example template. And they have an example template for 650 student K-12. And that's pretty darn close because our enrollment is 670. So it is a pretty accurate data point. And they have certain calculations for things. So I just want everyone to know that I have this available if anyone wants to see the basis behind this thing. So let's just go item by item. Your number one is some explanatory. Item two, in our September 20 plan, we're envisioning a 350 student per campus enrollment of 700. And this is Dr. Wilkens', the state's enrollment, it's a day effective in that. And then you can see the total square footage comparison. These gaps are going to look larger because the 132,000 is larger because that's what you have today. So the gaps.
What's the gap today is kind of right in the middle.
Right, kind of right in the middle. So the gap's going to be a bit wider. One library versus two, that's pretty explanatory. And then the size of the library. So your total square footage of the Mills Lawn Library and this, the space we're sitting into, compared to the square footage you would have in a K-12 library. Art rooms, you have two art rooms in this building and one in Mills Lawn. So you have three today in the new, in the new K-12, you would add two. And then some of this gets back to what Dr. Wilkens said too, is when you have a K-12 campus, you can use your rooms more efficiently because you might have, you've got two art rooms in the high school. I'm sure they're not using every period of the building, right? So.
You wanted the golf each room.
So you wouldn't necessarily need two done or two kitchens in there.
Right.
You get some economy of scale.
The size of the high school band room in the September 20 version was a bit larger than what the state would have co-funded. And they would have co-funded what they called instrumental, they would have funded one of those. So you would have had band, orchestra, choir, everything in one of those spaces versus. In the September 20 version, we had, if you remember, a band room, an instrument room, a metal room and a choir room at the high school. And then we had two, the other rooms.
I just want to make sure people who weren't at that meeting understand it's this September 20th and we're talking about square footage of Mike Ruschley's draft K-12.
Auditorium, but I want to speak about auditorium, I mean fixed seat, sloped floor performance auditorium. You don't have one today and in the K-12 plan you won't be having one either. The way those are generally accommodated in the new K-12 is it's a stage divided against most optimal student dining room. And so it becomes a multi, multi-use cafeteria, auditorium, whatever you want to call it. But the K-12 plan would not have had a dedicated auditorium space. The number of classrooms in the state's plan and in most districts I work with is great, a bit of a quadrants and many of them do want to locally fund additional square footage. Because in the state's plan, they count on sharing classrooms to make more grade gains. And so teachers in the planning period are out in the teacher workroom. And those rooms, when you walk through a state funded building that has that face square footage, you just take a tour, every room you look into is about 25 kids and they feel very full. And so, so when you see 29 classrooms compared to 43 in the proposal, that's a pretty big gap. And then in the 43 version, and we haven't refunded any cells fully, but my understanding is every teacher would have their own classroom in that type of environment. So that accounts for a portion of that.
So was that, that's certified, was that existing, the 43 art existing?
No, it's, if you, if you look at the September 20 master plan, both against this and you count it, all the classrooms are 43.
So like, do you addition that in the song chart?
Yeah, the new art music rooms and whatnot, yeah. Number of gyms, both, 2KX final case plan would check two gyms. The elementary gym in new 3K12 would have been 4,000. Mills Lawn gym today is 4,324, so a bit bigger. The high school gym though is a bit smaller, 9,300 would have had in new, you have just over 7,000 today. 7,000 square feet is, does not include that Mills State area. So I just took kind of the size of the gym box in that surrounding area. And this had to make sense intuitively because you don't have, as we discussed previously, sufficient kind of out of bounds area and that, that's a big part of the difference in this school footage. So you have a fitness center today that you would not have had, student dining room versus one. Your student dining room in the K-12 plan would be 3,792 square feet. And if you add up both of the square footages that you had today, 7,094. Recognizing that Mills Lawn's 4,324 is also the same. It's kind of double counting. You have two stages today, you would have had one. And the size of the one stage in the state funded plan would have been around 100 square feet. And by comparison, that would be smaller than Mills Lawn's stage, 1,750 square feet in the high school station. A two kitchen versus one, and then you can see the size of the kitchen area versus about 490. And a new, 3,754.
Questions or comments?
I mean, I'll, I'll fill out.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just want to point out, you know, some of the economies of scale. New buildings, there's also the square footage. And then we also have people's, teachers have to travel from one campus to another. We're paying them to travel and we're also losing construction time because there's no telephone network. We can't telephone work yet, so when they have to leave the high school and drive, we're pretty much losing a period of time that the teachers have to do that. Food service, right now we can outsource our food service. I imagine running one kitchen, I'll source a food service company. But means that if you have a smaller food service expense, you're pretty much the same as the front. And also that kitchen is bigger than either of the kitchens.
Other comments, questions?
To piggyback on Jay, the custodial may be a sentence shared between buildings. So we have evening first because part time here and part time in Mills Lawn, so.
I guess I want to make a comment that part of this, I thought it was essential, at least to share this, is that one of the things that, you know, we were talking about is we're an arts community and we need more spaces versus music, theater, print and art. The OFCC plan is very narrow on the spaces. It's limited for that, so that you, number of art rooms are, you know, you have one extra art room. It's usually the art refurbishment, renovation plan or the work of ours. The number of music rooms we've developed. One of the things that I like about the, about music room that Mike had developed was that it was a 99 seat flat box theater that it could all stick, it could do both. It could be both for choir and for theater. And although 99 seats isn't huge and yes, we have a lot of following of our, our theater program, it's, it's a space within the school that it gives the school something that does not happen now, so.
I agree that people would say we're an arts community. But I want everyone to understand that. We had so much criticism about the price of that that we took it off because people wouldn't pay for that. So I think if there's a lot of, I think as a community, we have to really step back and examine. When we say we're an arts community, there's a responsibility that comes with that. So one of the LFI's was indeed not touring, that not only could have been used by others from schools, but everybody else in the community because there is no other auditorium. So I just want people to remember, it's not that that plan was terrible because it was lean and we weren't focused on art. We clearly knew then and we know now, we are an arts community. So I want folks to remember that. And I think as we are looking at costs, you know, eventually when we get to item two on the, on the agenda, we're going to see that these costs are adding up. So if it comes a question, is the central issue money or is the central issue something else? Because I've operated in my time here that it was money because I'd been told that. But as we, as we try to make decisions that will impact residents and impact taxes that they take, you know, an offset of 26%, one building brings up, and we don't want to have this conversation tonight, but it does bring up an asset that we can do something with that could have been very positive, right? So, you know, there are only so many ways I can offset the cost of making new, bringing these facilities up to a state that our children, quite honestly, I'm going to say deserve. They deserve. So I just, I agree that we're an arts community, but I think sometimes we say that and we don't want to take the actions, the corresponding actions to support that. Because this, you know, that, that LFI, which never even materialized, would have been an extra. Probably about, I think I have a cost, maybe two and a half million dollars just for the auditorium. So we try to be conscious.
The geothermal, I remember, participated in that process. The geothermal LFI would have been pretty much the opposite, remember?
Right, correct.
To make us common.
Correct, that's what I'm saying, yes, right.
It is our.
Yeah, so I do want to point out as far as like funding the options as well. You can always, you know, somewhat, we're talking about the stuff and the cart from the horse. LFI's, you can leave off of the vote, you can leave off of the levy. And after a levy passes, you're still talking about a very long process until anything is started, renovation, building, very long process. So if you can say, okay, guarantee this with a levy, then you can start looking at those LFI's. And locally funded initiatives can be funded in multiple ways and auditoriums and gymnasiums and weight rooms and stuff like this, a lot of times could be funded in less traditional public school funding ways where, you know, you go out and say, we want an auditorium, how many, you know, people run a donation program and they can fund that and then, okay, can we raise 2.5 million dollars? Yes, okay, let's add that to our project because you have honestly months and years probably before the rate and grant actually. So there's a lot of time to address some of those LFI's in the planning process.
We've been going for 20 minutes, we said we're going to 25, Parker, ready?
I like bringing up one thing, that we have a hot new resource in the community in the, in the Kelly Hall. And that seems to be the, the community and the school district are working on partnership to use that unused resource.
So Jerry, when I first came, I was taking on a tour of Kelly Hall. That is an asset we don't know and, and it's beautiful and it needs so much work. I can't, I can only focus on what I can do for my, my children here with. I don't know that it's the school district's responsibility to renovate Kelly Hall. It's my responsibility.
I'm talking about a community collaboration.
You know, we're not going to decide that tonight.
I understand that, but I'm just saying, if there is a potential resource in the community for it.
And that's been here for a long time and there's been no movement on that potential resource, I guess would be what I would say.
Okay, any other questions or comments on this part of the?
First of all, comment, that would be, however this process rules out, if we, if anybody wants to consider a K-10 plan, my only recommendation is if we need to look at the square footage, as much as that one passed, four minutes.
I want to point out that the committee is charged, it's not a group when we're looking at a new building, our charge is to build a permanent group of plant, then the school board will take that information and talk to the committee and decide how to move forward. So the reason I thought it would sense to look at this comparison is because people have been saying to the committee in different moments, when we started thinking about, what if we didn't have two music rooms for example, let each of us? Well, that's not enough, we're, we're an arts community, we need that. You know, and then, you know, I started to think people didn't really know what the new building takes. And so we want to be, the new building is, is the air people are thinking about it as we're looking at this, but it's really not the work of the committee to be looking at this, this is how I just want to approach it. Questions or comments out here from the citizens?
Yeah, I just wanted to talk about the.
Um, yeah, I just wanted to talk about the tear down in your plan, tear down shoebox, tear down the music room. I, I just keep coming back to the thought of you're losing square footage, and why, when you, you have so many needs, why you lose the square footage? Because I, I think the, the things, the issues with both of those areas could be addressed. You could certainly use both parts of that building for something. Now, I think it was misconstrued at one point that we were talking about the level of floor and the music room, we're going to make a music room, that's not what we were thinking at all. We're not trying to designate which would be the areas, but we're saying it's square footage that could be useful in some way, and we should think about, because it's going to cost you money to tear it down, it's going to cost you money to replace it, so, why get rid of it? I know there's a lot of people who don't, really don't like the McKinney Building, but it's, it's, and they call it a trailer, it's not a trailer, it's a pre-made building that's a man, like a manufactured home, it's the same thing. So, it's certainly salvageable if you put some money into it, you have to put money into it, and, you know, that would be a consideration, like what I could use it for, but once, if you fix the problems, you can use it for all the money that you want. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm great, I was a maintenance supervisor for 27 years here.
Okay, I just had a question about the music room area. If you expand it to the perimeter where the sidewalk is, is that a possibility that it might be usable space? I mean, that's really a sidewalk that isn't good.
I'm talking about the music room.
The orchestra room?
Yes. My suggestion is when we get these kind of suggestions, please write it down, because we're not going to be able to know.
Sure.
Thank you for that.
Anything else, should we, so it's been 25 minutes, but let me try and stay on track here. So, let's go ahead and go to the second item on the agenda, which is presented by our maintenance plan advisor, who's Michael Murdock, and then his sidekick from THP, which I don't know what it means, and I don't know his name, so he's going to introduce the release itself. Tim, okay, and Tim evaluated the envelopes of the buildings, which means, what it sounds like, rose a little exterior. Okay, so we're giving this minute, and if you guys could reset an overview, we'll have a discussion, and.
Would Tim do you go first?
Sure.
So, about a month ago, I locked the buildings with Craig, pardon, he was incredibly knowledgeable and helpful, knew a lot of maintenance and ongoing repairs that were happening in the building. He's like one of the most knowledgeable guys that I've ever had, giving me a tour. He complimented me for passing on all kinds of rich, wonderful, wonderful next. And just overall, in general, it's one of the more, better, better maintained buildings that I've come across before in this. Jump into the, the whole next school building. Just the draft and all of the work. But, and basically, the original building was 57, then addition 52, addition 57, and 2002 addition. Pretty big campus, a lot of square footage, a lot of, long renovations, it's a large area, and the numbers, those numbers may seem pretty high for repairs, restoration, but doing the maintenance and repairs, it's going to cost more than start. Doing the repairs to the building, such as a roof replacement or a window replacement, has always been possible if you're building, a new building, on a personal basis.
Can you explain why that's true?
Typically, if you're building new, the contractor has a little more leeway with getting components and systems and schedule going on. If he's renovating existing building, he has to deal with occupied spaces, protection number, kids inside, users, dust protection. A lot of factors that go into work. Restoration work, such as the masonry, concrete, is usually a little more specialized field than just a, a crack from the concrete, light, there's an art to it with softening joints and ocean requirements for collecting dust, and you wouldn't necessarily have an infrastructure. So, the price per square foot of doing some perfect patching is going to be a lot more than playing. Tearing off the roof, have to dispose of that, keep it dry, you've got to turn, turn the space, don't try to put enough fine structure.
I understand that, there's also the cost of removing the existing structure before you build a building.
Sure.
Yes, there's, there's definitely a cost to.
It's very different than what we, what, from all the, from the maintenance plan people, we, we said, it's always cheaper to do, you know, renovation. So I'm not quite understanding, because you're not replacing all the, you know, flooring and your foundation.
I'm just saying, per, per unit, so if we're, if we're repairing a thousand square feet, we're going to pay three million for a building, a wall, a building, a wall, hundreds, hundred thousand pieces, so.
You're saying per, what?
Per square foot.
So, as an example, if you're going to build a new roof, a new school from the ground up, you install the roof on an existing concrete deck, or whatever the roof structure is made out of. If you're replacing it, you have to remove the old roof, fix all the rotten wood and the other stuff that's there. Install a new roof, you have to do it in a very compressed time, because you got, like you say at school, you've got June to August, can't do it while the kids are in there, or even the new sections of it. Where if it's a new building, you've got all the time you want, you can run the roof more efficiently in terms of how you install it. So, in a new construction, it's always cheaper in, in a replacement, larger placement than repair or renovation. The reason our renovations cheaper overall is because you're not paying for the foundations, you're not paying for the walls, you're not paying for the structure. Generally, you're, you're digging, you know, pipe up, you're not, you're not removing all the concrete, you're removing a narrow section of concrete, you're digging pipe up. So, renovation overall, you know, if you go back to the same dollars of 1957, should be less expensive, but, you know, that's typically the case. Usually you're spending, let's say, $450 for $20 square foot. For new, a renovation won't be $420 for a new one. So.
Okay, good.
Absolutely.
And that's what you meant, okay, good.
This is my first time speaking.
What about anybody?
You'll remember.
So, going through, I mean, the building is in pretty good shape from the masonry point of view. There's isolated areas, there's some, some fallen concrete foundations, there's some cracked roof, stepped roof, concrete deterioration, rotten, broken legs. There's some roof structure overhang, recent falls. Another thing I would consider, a light safety issue, that these should be knocked down, these should be repaired, and that could go down. Those should be addressed. There's other avenues such as the building seals, window parameters, basement control units, most of those are beyond, they're using light sealed material, typically they use polyurethane, it's not going to be stainless, so I had this painting out in this, internal, and the plan to revert back to, to stainless eventually, to be, be harder.
That's the sort of item you replace anyway, just normal maintenance.
It's normal maintenance, and that's what I would consider, most of the stuff in here, I would, I would consider, normal maintenance and restoration, that's what we, I prefer. Fix the old buildings, keep it, create a new life. Functionality or this or that.
Do you have a question about the concrete? I did see any reference to the concrete patio that is on this wing of the building by the city department, pretty broken up in our summer, tricky as it is, significant, the slab is broken up, can I see any, whether, whether you care or expect?
Yeah, I don't know what the site, the sidewalk is, or?
That is not a sidewalk, that is a, of a building, but it was as a learning space by students here outside, and that slab is broken down.
I do not agree with that. Single pane windows, a lot of cutting around the, 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 the replacement, some issues with the little panels, they have some corrosion on there, those can be cleaned up and dressed clean. One of the other reports I saw, I'm not sure exactly what parts they're talking about, some of those panels, or asbestos containing materials.
That's the musical.
Looked like the music room in high school.
The high school.
Three-story.
The three-story.
Could you speak a little louder for our sake?
Thank you so much. And if you speak loudly, so the owl is going to pick, Kathy's taking video of the screen saying, Kathy, so it's not that we can't record the screen. We, this system is set up because we had criticism that nobody could hear or see people. Now we can hear or see people, and Channel 5 is recording the screen, but the owl really needs you to speak probably a little more loudly, thank you, G, over there.
So, and I'm trying to follow you as best I can, so keep up the, the, the.
One of, one of the reports I read said the corrugated metal panels have, are composite material, asbestos.
At the high school.
At the high school.
Well, I, I don't know, there, we do have a asbestos management plan. Yeah, hazardous material plant, or inspection of the stuff. Yeah, well, they, it used to be done every six months, I don't know if that's still based or not.
I don't, I can't speak for six months, it's done regularly. What I can say with certainty is that there is asbestos in both buildings, which currently is contained.
Yes.
That is what I can say with certainty.
Yes, well, we at the time determined that it was, and this is with help of our asbestos program coordinator, who was an outside person, and he made sense telling us that most times it's better to manage it in place as opposed to tearing it out, because once you tear it out, it releases it, and then you have another problem. So, we managed it in place, and we removed, when we were doing projects, and we needed to remove it, that's you remove asbestos. So there is a plan, a book, that will tell you where assumed asbestos is or confirmed asbestos is, and that would probably, that section would probably be in that book, would have, if it was actually missing. Yeah, I, you gave it to me, I read it, not that, the report.
My point to that is, if the metal panels have asbestos insulation in them, if they're composite insulated metal, and they'll start corroding, that should be a concern, that they corrode and could break down the panel or start to.
Are we, are we still on section five of the report?
Sure.
Page seven. Page seven. So, and I saw you, let's see, firmly broken windows, please.
So, the new technology for window system is firmly broken window with insulated glass. So firmly broken window has basically two cases of aluminum, aluminum extrusion, which are put together, but basically like a plastic spacer, so that when the outside aluminum gets cold in the weather, it doesn't transmit that to the interior. So, single pane glass in the building doesn't have that, so it's going to be a lot.
So this is a pretty correct, my idea of though is that firmly broken is still, is a, is a?
Yes, firmly broken is bad, firmly broken is.
Okay, that's what I wanted to say.
Some of, some of the windows in the, windows in 2002, 2002 edition, have firmly. There was one thing insulated glass in those, it's hard, it's not a huge deal, easily displaced, or nice for. Some of the wood infills over the, you know, indoor unit air conditioners starting to get some disoloration on it. We're not allowed to say the full word, but it's called by lots of the broke, because we don't know what it is. That should be a concern, rest and replace, come up with a, a different solution to that. The left picture is, this is the building, sealants in the top row there, that's kind of your first line of fence, it's typically where, we get a lot of calls for buildings leaking, how we fix it, sealants are usually, first go to the left ones, it's similar to crack, middle one, the sealants are in, push out joint, that happens over time with brick growth, and we'll have to squeeze that joint closed, it's a lot of our projects.
Do the bricks actually have to go in the door?
They do, so when, Brick 101, when the bricks are fired and killed, that's the driest it'll ever be, because once they sit outside, the floor humidity and clay will swell, so that's what those control joints are designed to do.
Okay.
So, typically you'll see them every 30 feet, and I don't know, there'll be some kind of in and out in the wall to accept.
So when they get squeezed?
Ceiling comes down.
Yeah, so, do you have to be more spaced, or?
It depends on how much it's going to corrode. This is in the 2002 building where it's happening, it's probably not done growing, it probably waits about, is expected to be about 25, 30 years, and it'll stop in. And it'll stop in its keeps if they're not spaced properly and the bricks start getting, plugging each other and popping off the wall. So, what we're better to do is be cutting the cock out, steady saw, whiting that joint with a knife.
You just, so saw part of the, you have to, you know, that's it, whiten that joint out.
Same sort of coating, sealant coating that are physically dead. Roofs, the single ply roofs, I believe it was over June or, uh, 2002 or something.
Yeah.
No, thank you, thank you, seven. Yes. Actually, I, I still let you say that you was not cleaning properly and I wanted to turn to, uh, the teachers that are, that are teaching in there and I know about our teachers in the third community, if it makes sense, you could speak about. Uh, is that, does it match what the Sunday reporting that there are no leaks or no, uh, complaints about the roof as part of the building in the night? So.
I'm, I'm glad you said that because when I read that, I said, well, maybe there just wasn't a leak that day. You know, maybe it wasn't raining that day. So are we talking like there are no leaks like this year or in the last year? Or are we just talking about that specific day? Because they would definitely disagree with that comment.
And that's why we got in the survey, I remember about the nineteen fifty-seven leak about teachers over the school time, uh, classes were reporting some moisture is coming from that roof.
Absolutely. Okay. The general.
If I remember correctly, two or three years ago, um, there was a leak over the window that this meeting was in. It was a point they had to move down to conference room profile, uh, as a classroom while they were trying to repair the roof. The company that was repairing the roof couldn't get the leak stopped, I guess in three or four outings to fix it and ended up having to replace the entire section.
That is correct.
Yeah, that, and that's a, already an expensive roof, so it's not gonna be a high performance. Single ply, it's a puncture, it's bad. With metal deck roofing, you could have a puncture in one location, you need to hitch down the deck and come out somewhere.
Oh, that's, that was, I think that deck you need to protect.
Thought when I was walking through the building with Craig, he said that they had leaking issues and Carl was out chasing them and had to address the walls. What I thought it sounds like is still.
But I think you also said that there were, there were stains, so you're aware that there were.
Yeah.
But what you're saying right now is that it's a cheap roofing, it's not for high performance. And so if we were to think about addressing this long-term, would we have the structure here to have a thicker roof?
We would have to analyze that, but I would assume that the structure is designed to take a typical roof structure, so.
Did it, did it, your estimate of a roof cost, did you, uh, estimated the replacement for comparable product or a higher efficiency product for that?
We use a modified pitchment system, which is, uh, multi-layered, so it's on the modular, uh, building.
So would that be also achieve that high performance replacement?
Uh, it's, it's, it's out there. It's a pretty good system.
The single ply is like a twenty-year. It's gonna be need to be replaced in twenty years. Uh, the system that he priced is probably a forty-year roof. And it's much better, it's a lot more labor, it's more difficult to install, but long-term it's much better.
So the, that section originally happened to call it built-up roof, which is, um, installed on, it's a stone ballister roof. So it originally had it, so the structure should be fine if you wanted to put a, a better roof on it, which was.
So, the trick with replacing a roof is that you have to, you're supposed to be bringing the roof insulation up to code. So it could be, you could have two inches of insulation there now and maybe six or eight at that rate. Then you're dealing with edge condition where all of a sudden your insulation is, apparently you're chasing the rest. Additional details to get it off.
And is that, is there contingency for this in your estimate?
No, because we don't exactly know what's there now. I'm, I'm assuming that you get the full insulation replacement and full roof replacement, but it doesn't, it doesn't count as a.
So this is not a, a bare minimum, right? A bare minimum here, okay.
We have a contingency number in there which should cover some of that.
Yeah.
And that's just based on percentage of construction cost.
And that's got the roofs, because both roofs have the same thing, like, so we've got ballister roofs, we've got the rubber roof, we've got the others. One of the big problems, particularly on the ballister, is once you get a water leak, you can't find a damp tank. So in some areas, it might as well be a pedal driveway. Would we be better off going with something simple like a rubber roof or a PVC?
Well, not a rubber roof.
You know, so, so that you can easily find where there's a puncture or a hole.
The TPO or PVC or KAD is kind of the industry standard where for what people are putting in because it's single ply, but it's also easy to go down and see if there's a puncture, you can repair that isolated area. Sealing it with a heat welding system. It's, might be a little bit more than the modified pitchment, uh, technology. I might have to check our numbers on that. But it's probably the best value, three hundred dollars. And it's easier, definitely easier to track down if you have a professional inspector. See where the moisture is and trail where. Not to say that can't be done with ballistics, because we've got, we've got some fire. We do, we do that for a roof replacement or roof repair because if you're doing a roof repair, partial replacement, you have to get all the way to sufficient. Because you're not getting warranty if you don't do that. So we have a guy that will come in and he'll scan the areas. He's got a crazy expensive infrared camera. And pick up some roof, so remark down the areas, put that in documents, so they know what, they have cut out plates, part of the base.
In, in that section, do you note for both for high school and Yalston that there is a lack of a, uh, fall barrier on top? Uh, and I was wondering first, is that something that you've included in your estimate too, the insulation?
I, I did not include any of that, but I did notice going up on the roof and with a lot of maintenance being required that there is an inherent liability for not, the school not providing that or the contractor has to, uh, make, uh, his own efforts to provide safe working, but for his employees, they have to set barriers.
So that should not include it in there? And that's, I think that's a question that I saw you, so Tim, here's my, here's my question for you. In this three-point, three million dollar price tag for Justin Repair Hagens. What else is not included? I mean, I, and I, I laugh, but it's a very serious question. Because these things eventually, it's gonna come down to this, period. So if we don't have a fall barrier included in the estimates and, um, I've got some other things that are not included. I guess we are trying to get some accurate understanding of what we need to do. And it's really hard to do that without all of that. So I might ask that, that we have a, this, you know, the shortest of what's not included? Because when we're on those lawn, you know, I read work reports and, um, just between both of them, we're pushing, pushing ten million dollars. So for the, for just for the building.
Well, I, something that, I mean, a lot of these, like, talk about window replacements in this renovation that we're talking about, right? Panels and stuff that, so a lot of that stuff, you're not gonna pay for twice. So you're not gonna go in and fix all the windows and then tear them out and put new ones in.
You have, for example, three hundred dollars a square foot on the deep renovation areas. In theory, that would cover the roofing, the windows, the portion of this, in, in theory. We, we need to hammer that.
Right, I'm just saying you don't have to pay for twice, so you're not gonna do a lot of this work when it's gonna be replaced.
What, what Tim's saying is the windows are shot. And they need to be replaced.
Yes.
And if you're gonna, you know, so you need to replace them, whether you do it in a renovation project or you do it separately, maybe the roof.
I, I think that's the kind of information we need. You know, we gotta, we, we could drill down at this and, and not one of us sitting here, except the three gentlemen here, I think, really have this level of expertise about school buildings. We could spend hours on this. What we need to hear is, your windows are shot.
The roof?
Your, their roof is shot. Your facade is wet, I mean, because.
Your scalds.
And, and, and the, and the turn-in theory never has a zero-dollar tag attached to it. So, um, just one word to be aware.
So in terms of safety, if you have a piece of equipment that's on the roof, that's within, I think, six feet of a dead, you have to have protection. And that, if you go up and replace your roof, they're gonna have, they're gonna ask for that, if you wanna see that. Years ago you didn't, now you, if it's not, if it's not within six feet, then there's no requirement that you protect it, that you want to protect it, but there's no requirement. There should be something around your shut, your scuttle hole, when you go up, your scuttle hole.
Yes.
Okay, there should be something around that to the guy who's going up and up, up and down the roof, saying, hold on, you're gonna look down the ladder. Other than that, the contractors have to provide the necessary.
So.
Just, like, one more thing. So, I just ran the number, so, uh, Mills Lawn, you take his three, 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 five, seven, seven bucks a square foot. If you use the same thing in high schools, it's eighty dollars a square foot. So if you had a theoretical three hundred dollars a square foot budget to attack a whole chunk of the building, seventy of that goes out to this and you still have two hundred and thirty bucks a square foot for all the systems and all the finishes. So, I think these numbers would fit with this and have the budget parameters.
Something I would say too, just in terms of, we don't have lots of parameters, right?
Oh, well, I was asked early on, like, what I thought the renovation budget concept was, and I said, well, three hundred dollars a square foot.
Yeah, well, just for information, I, I totaled up new construction, uh, renovation and three hundred dollars a square foot. And, uh, so, uh. Well, I, I looked at the mechanical electric, okay, the, uh, moats, uh, put out there for the building. I looked at the envelope number, which Tim put together, and I looked at new construction. And I looked at that for both buildings. And another way I looked at it is the new construction, the new, your three hundred dollar, uh, per square foot, uh, for deep renovations, and they came out almost exactly the same.
So you're saying that it costs the same to build, you have to renovate?
What's that?
So you're saying that it costs the same to build, you have to renovate?
No, I'm just saying, I'm just validating Mike's three hundred dollars a square foot number.
Okay.
For the deep renovation. For the deep renovation, because if you, if you total THP's number, moats' number and new construction numbers and compare that to new construction and three hundred dollars a square foot for deep renovations, it works out the same.
I'm just wondering where we had budget parameters, so that, that was my question, so I, I wrote it down, three hundred dollars a square foot.
But again, my purpose in, in bringing this up was I was kind of validating Mike's three hundred dollars a square foot based on the other information that we had for a deep renovation.
So how do we wanna go forward? I'm hearing, uh, Kerry say going over all these emails, um, I think we've got another whole report yet. Um, how to, and, you know, how to kind of, um, I, you know, how to go forward with this?
One thing I'm gonna do with, uh, Tim is I'm gonna go through his list and prioritize those things that I think are like safety issues that you have to take care of, because always leaning against the railing, it's gonna collapse, you know, property. Uh, versus things that are high priority because they're weak or get worse, you have water infiltration issues. Versus things that you can take your time and you do it three to five years. So kind of, you know, immediate, one to two years, three to five years, and include the dollars to that. So you have that option at least, if, you know, you're gonna have to do certain things.
Okay, can I, can I offer a suggestion about how we, because you want this to really be the dialogue and question rather than like your reports? In the last report that you sent us, Mike?
Yeah.
In your email?
Yeah.
If you don't mind, I'm just gonna read it.
Okay.
There are many systems near failure. And Yellow Spring Schools needs to have a firm sense of what the systems are going to cost, what systems are going to cost the most in terms of time, i.e. the inability to replace in a timely manner through the supply chain and money, which is escalating due to inflation if you allow them to fail. There's a strategy in this in terms of prioritizing your spending to optimize savings in terms of energy savings, maintenance dollars and system resiliency and of course cash flow. I believe you wanna prioritize the, the choices you have to optimize the system's money. If you don't plan a best-case strategy on how to spend your way out of a hole you're in, your building and system failures will look for you and force you to react to crisis where you have no choice but to solve a crisis at any price. So when I read that and then I hear, I guess I'm just a little confused because I hear, well, you've got five years. You, you've got, you could just fix this or you could prioritize, so we're either, all systems are either at failure or they're not at failure. So that's, that's my, that's my confusion. I just need you to tell us straight. If all the systems are near, near failure, then they're all near failure. So I struggle to, to say, how can we get a system to last five years when you're telling me it's at failure and if I need a replacement, it's gonna take eighty-eight weeks?
I was talking like preparing the brick. The, about forty years preparing the brick isn't, isn't gonna cause you to shut your school down if you have an additional leak. But if your electrical system fails, you're out of school. If your, you know, boiler fails, you're out of school. Um, so there are systems you have that if they fail, you're out of school. And you're not gonna go to Home Depot and buy a twelve-hundred amp distribution panel.
But you're saying that we're facing school closures of the electrical panel?
I, yes, I concluded that that electrical panel is a serious risk.
On both, on both buildings?
Um, yes, on the old ones, on the older. And the boilers, I mean, you might be able to find a boiler that somebody has that might brought back in, but probably not. So there's certain things, if you have your sewer system collapsed and you cannot flush your toilets, you're out of work, you're out of business. So, you know, there's, and, and you're going to have to saw your floor up and find where to get or the clogging, replace it. Um, that's, I was trying, there's certain things, you have a very short fuse and you can address them either proactively doing summer projects to get the system replaced or, um, you're gonna decide to do it because they're gonna fail.
When I, when I did the average, on your, on your spreadsheet, when I did the average of our remaining lifetime of all systems, it was minus four years.
Bro.
Okay. It's a, just to underline what you said, is that we're looking to have, we're facing school closures over electrical boilers and sewage right now.
Yeah, I think you can have school with air conditioning not working. This BRF system here, if it fails, you don't have P or.
So this is the top complaint of staff. When staff talk about what is impacting their, uh, their heating right now, by example, survey that we've given them, it was air temperature and then air change.
Totally agree.
Right, and so. Right, and so if we're talking about phasing, you know, trying to articulate the way, phasing renovations, that we need to consider being tight on certain things, and I'm keeping and retaining our beloved teachers.
Okay, I just wanted to.
But it's, I mean, to me, when we went to, when we, we went to Oaklands, Junior High High School, it's a whole building and all personal building. They spent, it's a hundred and seventy-eight thousand square feet, which is another third, I would say, larger than our two buildings combined. They replaced all their mechanical systems. Let me just read it out. So it's a thousand students, a hundred and seventy-eight thousand square foot. They spent eighteen million dollars, which they made these improvements over three summers of work and some during the school year. They replaced all mechanical systems, including replaced all HVACs, air exchanges, added air conditioning to both gyms and the auditorium, we cut it and updated all the restroom, replaced all the ceilings and lighting, updated the PA and tech systems, updated electric service to four-eighty, which is the current standard. Half of the roof was replaced, including extensive repair of a slate roof in the oldest part of the school. But what was not included, in the project, was flooring, where it's sure of windows. So this is, you know, a much larger school, so when we start to think about all these potential failures, what they did was they just replaced it all, and they did it in some time. I'm sure they did it in a.
Fazed way.
In a phased way.
Are our systems at the same point, Arson?
Well, it doesn't matter if you replace them, as far as I can tell. I mean, we need windows replaced, which stations need.
Or we need more than that, we need the switch, right? We're looking at school closures of our switch line, all that same.
We have our system.
Wait.
Where's that come from?
Well, it's, it's.
It could happen.
Yeah.
You don't know.
It's so likely to happen?
Well, I'm asking, oh, I recommend you just put a camera in.
Yeah.
Put a camera in, and I'll tell you.
He doesn't say replace, he says put a camera in.
If you, if you go put a camera in, and you see a bunch of dirt, and you see a crap on the top of the pipe, you need to replace it. It's gonna.
It can also be relined.
Well, not if.
That's rough to be replaced.
Not if it's broken. It won't, they will, no plumbing contractor will do that. I've been down that route. If they see the pipe, it's out of alignment or it's cracked, because the lining doesn't have any pins in it. If the pipe collapses, the lining's like a.
Collapses.
It collapses to, if it's not pointing the hole here to replace. Well, sure, for big sewers, but not on a four-inch.
I've put them in small sewer myself. They had them for four-inch sewers.
Okay, I'm telling you that when I talk to the best plumber about doing that, they don't want it.
I was gonna, I was just asking, we pay these contractors good money, we should respect their commitment. We're just trying to ask some questions. In the end, what we never talk about, I've never heard us talk about it any meeting, is our children. We are making these changes for our children and our staff. So let's think about, if the, if the situation is dire, then that might help us think about the response that may.
I think, I think that Terry's, that, you know, that we know we have some time pressure here, and that we should acknowledge that. We all care about our children. I don't think we need to constantly be saying that. That's the reason we're here, that's the reason we're, some of us are volunteering, some of us, you know, are on the school board. I mean, we all have responsibilities here, so, um, so that's, I don't think it needs to be said a lot, you know, to, for people to know, people's.
But you have a reason. My understanding, I'm gonna take issues as challenging what the experts actually are saying. And I'm gonna bring an example, not, I'm gonna bring an example of that on May second, twenty twenty-two, experts at this table say that our electric system was current and safe. And if I quote it, it says, whatever renovation planning funds will not require complete electrical overhaul. And then like, we actually talked to the experts that know that some buildings work, and it's completely different message here. And so I think that I want to make sure that we are respecting the expertise of the experts on that. Schools are not residences, schools are not commercial buildings, they are on specific age. And I think that I want to acknowledge, and hearing you, like you say, that a lifetime of a switch line is between fifteen and seventy-five years, and beyond year seventy, we need to plan for this.
I think everybody would say that.
Yeah. I was, I was actually intending to say this even before, it was specific, the part was specifically made that we shouldn't be questioning those reports. I still really appreciate that attention was thrown to the fact that there are leaks in the roof, that when the report states that, you know, that those leaks have all been addressed. I think that, that all of you are doing your jobs, that I, that the committee members in their expertise with buildings to be doing this step and forth, and with those of you in the schools to be doing this step and forth, to check the information in the report is good. And also, the report isn't nearly as detailed as the information you guys are drilling out through your questions. So I just wanted to highly encourage you guys to bring votes back, because the way that, as much information as you guys are generating, I think the way you do need to get even deeper into the details. In particular, you know, I think the committee needs to be thinking about recommending to the school board, making those like truly urgent safety repairs, thinking about possibly recommending some of these repairs that would just prevent extremely expensive repairs further down the line. Although, of course, that blurs, because at a certain point, you're like, well, but do we want to recommend something that would kind of save us money if we're definitely doing maintenance? But we want to leave the school board the opportunity to compare doing maintenance versus building new. And then, of course, the things that you definitely want to win, so that the school board can make those judgments. And then, of course, the things that, you know, are just ice. So getting that full prioritized list and developing solutions, I think, is really important. Honestly, I found looking at the report and trying to just find, I think, give me.
I mean, I'm sure you have to say.
It's not.
Okay. All right.
I say one thing, I'd like to alleviate the fear of boiler failure, because obviously, the leak system and the air conditioning system needs to be replaced. But as far as shutting the school down, there are rental boilers available and available in the catastrophe where you lose your boiler. You can bring a boil, a mobile boiler, screw it with the sir. Sue out all water.
We want to stay as far away from that as possible, we didn't.
Exactly.
We can still, I want to panic.
See, I'm not panicked.
I'm fucking.
I'm just. You're not talking about me, but in the end, it's gonna be me calling the board president and saying, we have an issue. So I don't want our plan to be, it's okay, because we can rent a boiler and bring it in.
Well, I, again, I want to bring the, back to the charge of the committee, which is developed, to develop this first permanent improvement plan or a comprehensive permanent improvement plan, which will require, kind of in the next phase, I think, for Mike and Mike to be sitting down together and starting, well, back up a little bit. There have been some issues raised by staff that have maybe not been addressed by Mike's draft. But ultimately, so those need to be looked at. But then beyond that, starting to, for you guys to start to be working together, which is what I'm thinking, in terms of, you know, starting to put together a plan. So that's kind of what I see as the next step. At some point, before we end the meeting, that's, it is not like us to get some input to initially regarding his.
I still have questions about the boss engineering, so, but how we, can we set up?
We're still here.
But Jay also has been raising his hand, I'm sorry.
Oh, that's fine, just wait my turn. I guess I have a different understanding of the charge of the committee. My understanding was that the committee was to review all options, including a permanent improvement plan. So that would include looking at a, at a new build. Or, so that's, that's my understanding. We need to weigh all of our options. So with that, I guess I have a couple of questions. Do buildings cost per square foot? What is that price range that we're looking to play?
So if you go to the OCC website, and you go to the resources, it'll, click on the resources, and you go to twenty twenty-two, it'll tell you how much schools cost per square foot if they finish in twenty-one. Yes? So you can see what is per square foot. And I think we're talking about construction, so it was like three seventy, three eighty. When you throw in design fees, throw in contingency, throw in CMV or whoever, four twenty-five to four fifty is a reasonable number.
Right now.
That's a day.
And then.
Okay. And it depends on, you know, where you are if you're replacing, you got a lot of contractors and they're competing, you get a better price. Right now, contractors are busy, so, you know, it's a function of being the market at the right time.
Four fifty is per.
That's a good number, a good number to.
Three hundred.
Per square foot for a deep renovation.
And then hopefully, it's exactly, we have two hundred and eight systems, hopefully, it's about a hundred bucks a foot. Couple of years to go, pretty quickly. So you might want to say that's fifty, well, a hundred and fifty bucks a square foot for the targeted renovations, up to three hundred for the deep renovations, and then approximately four fifty.
And the deep renovations, you mean, into the classrooms, new case work, new finishes, new carpet, and with, you know.
Yeah, I think, I think we're mostly looking at deep renovations.
So do you have to accept that your budget is important?
Yeah. And then, I guess my other question would be, if we renovated, do you have an estimated useful life on a complete renovation service?
It's a jump up here, but, you know, assuming the structure is in good shape, and that's a question I haven't asked anyone. That I'm looking at your, this opinion on is, assuming the building structure has a lot of length left, you're essentially getting in your building, looking at deep renovation, because you're getting all new systems, all new finishes. The only thing you're, you're not quite getting necessarily is all new underground sanitary, because usually that's possible, because they have some city camera down that, that's sort of need to. But at three hundred dollars per square foot, you're essentially getting a new, a new building. So I would throw a fifty-year time span on something like, the systems aren't gonna go that long for you.
But the building.
But it would be, if you're gonna put that much money into it, this is a long-term commitment.
Yeah. Does, does the concrete have the half-life wall?
Yeah, the recent mortar will go fifty years. You're gonna have to replace your boiler a year.
Yeah, I'm a mechanic, I know we're not.
Mike, I do have a question then about design flaws. So I know that you brought it up on the roof, you mentioned, you know, that they must design to go on the roof on the north of the gymnasium at Gilson, and I'm thinking, do we just replace it with the same design? Which is replace, which we change the design of it so that we have a better lifetime.
If you're replacing that roof, you could re-pitch it to the exterior, so it's not catching.
Okay, and then, of course, the question that I have for you is that we need to update your running trouble.
I would think that would be pretty easily done, let's take our installation.
Okay.
And then do the gutter system first.
I have a similar question to you about the heating situation. You mentioned in your report that we are limited in the options that we can have for replacement because of how, because of the support system we have on the roof. You said we have to replace with the same equip, with equipment and with the same organs.
With the rooftop units.
Yeah.
Well, when we, when we replace rooftop units, the first thing we look at is the structure that's there. And we determine, because rooftop units are typically heavier today than they were twenty-five years ago. There's a lot more in them, and they're typically heavier, the opening's different. So we go to a structural engineer and say, hey, can I put this on the roof? You do an analysis and say yes or no. If it's no, well, here's what you got to do, or we have to fortify the roof, so it'll handle the new load.
So my, my question was going to be, do we need to re-pick the heating system in general? Since all of it is more or less inspired.
If you're doing a deep renovation, I would, right, I would do a different system. I would not put rooftop units back.
Okay. And so that's the basis, because then my question is, are the numbers that you submitted in the front reflecting that, reflecting that we have.
Yeah, it reflects replacing what's there. Everything in my number reflected, was my charge, that like-for-like, replace what's there.
Yeah, and that's something that we, I'm worried about, is that if we could have several scenarios, so that what it is, what does it have to replace, like-for-like, what does it have to replace with a bad system?
Easily done, sure. I can give you a repair or replace, new.
Yeah.
New system, yeah, no problem. That's a pretty common quest.
Yeah. I think it would be useful for having in the spreadsheets, but we understand if we have to replace so many systems at once, can't directly change the design of it, so I need to.
Yeah.
So I'd just like to make a lot of comment, because we've had two ballots that look at the schools we have. That's a year away from any other ballot coming up, if we put something on there. So it's probably three years before there's a minimum, any large rehab that's gonna happen. And yet, there's talk of rehabs, there's talk of rebuilds, we've got the poor engineer over here talking, but no, no guidance. You're designing stuff, again, with no real guidance of where we're going on it, because none of us have any idea of how much money we can afford. In other words, how much money can, can we, can we get in to do all of this type of work? Whatever we can afford, it's probably gonna be less than would be optimal. That's probably a foregone occasion, because the cost of everything has gone up so drastically over the last two years. Yet there are designs to demolish square footage that has already been paid for, there's wish lists of wants, with no idea of what we can afford. And we've, we've lost time and we've lost focus, as mostly equipment's failing, which we're all talking about here. So our input and the school decisions are rudderless without a budget. It's really time to address the root cause of the problems that we face here in the other schools, and determine how much money there is for maintenance, for remodeling, for construction projects. It's basically time to decide where are we gonna do maintenance before the building deteriorates even further, which is what they're continuing to do at the moment, as has been pointed out by some speakers here a couple of weeks ago. Our engineers cannot come up with a focused permanent improvement plan without a cash figure that we have per year and for a major upgrade. We're spending the school district's money to get this information, so let's, let's do it right. Let's, let's give them figures they can work with. The school board has a fiduciary responsibility to the taxpayers in Yellow Springs, to the students present and future, and to the teachers and staff. So I suggest that a maintenance budget would, for adequate funding to maintain the building, should be worked out. And then, a budget for doing the actual rehab should be brought up. And that would be probably partially fall onto your shoulders, Jay. But, but if we don't know how much money we have, we really don't know how to spend it, because you don't know how much school to draw, you don't know how, should we sort of say, hey, forget the rooftops we have and do geothermal, because the payback's great, but maybe we can't even afford the geothermal. So I, I just think a lot of us, you know, if you're, even if you were planning to go on vacation, someone you always say, how much money have I got to go on vacation? If you didn't have a budget, you might say, let's go the whole way around the world. So I, I just feel at this stage, you know, we have so much information, you've done a whole amount of work, you've got a great amount of information, but we really need to be able to start chiseling this down into something concrete where it'll be able to work on.
We do know. I mean, we knew in twenty twenty-one how much we had, because we can only operate within our debt capacity. And so next Thursday night, one week from tonight, in this very room, we will be talking money. So we do know. So it's hard for me to say, here's how much we have to spend, when I don't know the extent of the problem. I mean, I know it now. And so I don't believe, it's not my area, so I'm on a preference, that you can do a maintenance plan on equipment that has outlived its useful life. What is there to maintain? And so in the spreadsheet, in the database that Motes provided, you can go down to the bottom and see, here's how much it's gonna cost us to repair and maintain, here's how much it's gonna cost us to do new. We know we will eventually do new, so when I add that up, I'm thinking, okay, if I just live along. So when I add that up, I'm thinking, okay, if I just live along, then I have to pay this, but, but then I also have to pay this amount plus this amount. And my question is why? Why not just pay this amount?
Yeah, when I say maintenance, I was talking about that deep maintenance. I'm talking about the roof flashing, the sneaking, that type of stuff. You know, the day-to-day maintenance.
But the day-to-day maintenance is not, is not why our systems are failing.
No. They're, they're, they're running out of time, but those, those, those two sides to the whole building is way more than just.
But actually, no, those numbers are on, on there. I mean, I, I did the map and the angle altering cost, which I mean includes 30% maintenance. And there it came up to $472,000 per year for the.
For ADP maintenance, yeah, from my spreadsheet.
Yeah, yeah. And then I, you know, I added your running tab on both buildings and your running size on both buildings, knowing that it doesn't include the replacement of the modular spaces. We didn't include that in the high school, making the information so that.
Would be a chance to get.
Yeah, it didn't include the security protocol, it didn't include the ADA compliance, it didn't include the indoor bathroom. So there were some missing elements and we're up to 50 million here without addressing the design flaw here. Um, so yeah, the numbers that you must see here.
Okay, so let's say it comes up to 50 million. Do, do we have 50 million? Will we ever have 50?
Well, come back next time. Okay.
So.
I don't like to intervene here. Fairly one, to just say, well, it gives the role and charge to the committee. It is not to look at all the options, but we did talk about. So it says the goal is to figure out if comprehensive permanent improvement plan could match our facilities' needs, basically, in an economically and sustainably, an environmentally sustainable way. And we said we were going to be focusing at maintenance and upgrades needed to provide safe function building, uh, capital projects that are necessary to meet additional identified needs and investigate the resources needed to maintain facilities and their best conditions over time. We said those can be focused. We didn't say we're going to look at all options. But we did say in here that we will look at, at plans at different price points. And I think that's giving a little bit of where you're, you're coming from. And so I think, I mean, I have some price points in my mind of where maybe we should, and sort of in a general, where, what we should be thinking about. But that, but, but, but you know, the school board has to weigh in here as well. However, this committee's job is to actually completely put together some plan at different price points. That is our, that is our charge from the school board. I don't want us to get off of that charge because the community asked us to do this. They asked us to do it in 2018. Now, we said there was a committee in 2019, which was a task force. And now there's our committee. And I want to deliver to the, to the village, to the district, people who have asked for us to, to, to show what this could look like. And so I think that's, we need to stay focused at that and not start to talking about. Like, I think we do need to know the total cost. Before we say what we can pay, I mean, we need to know the total cost because the, the, the point may be we can't pay for it. I understand that. But to say we have 15 million and, and then not know, well, what, what would the whole cost be? I think that's valuable information, both as superintendent and as a resident taxpayer. I want to know where my money's going. I want to know what's the total cost. And then the total cost the district may not be able to afford. But I can know the total cost to know why we can't afford it and why we might be taking. Well, I think until we actually get a plan together, just like Oakwood, you know, they, they actually started from what we were told at the point from the perspective of, well, the community's support. And they decided they're running $100,000. And then they went from there and kind of did what, what they were suggesting. Went from there to say, well, okay, so what can we do with that? Uh, what can we stress? There's a very important distinction with, oh, you're right, 18 million, and, and what they did was beautiful. I mean, that, you're right. So I, so I think, you know, starting having some numbers and kind of thinking, what can we do with it? And especially with Mike having met with administration at schools in terms of what, um, what they, from their point of view, the needs are.
But that was a different ask, to be clear. We met, we get needs, but I've been through this process, this is my third time. And I still wholeheartedly believe a new K-12 facility is what's right for our kids. So yes, I answered the question. And, and Oakwood's a completely different story. It's a historical building, it's got a different context. I know what the impact is when one heat unit goes out. Now I've got 120 kids changing their routines, I've got seven teachers. To talk about this level of renovation and not think about how it impacts our kids and our teachers and our community, there, there are so many variables to this conversation. I mean, it's, it's a lot deeper than just saying, what will our community support? And if we don't get to a spot where we look at total dollars, we're asking our community potentially to support something that's way more expensive long-term and doesn't solve our long-term needs. And, and when we started this, we were looking at a potential maintenance plan. That made perfect sense, but now we're looking at every system that's gone to use of life. And, and we're talking about our current permanent improvement fund, bringing in 150,000 a year. We can't begin to touch a $15 million project on 150,000.
130.
Okay, it's in, so I think it's very important that we do look at what, what is a replacement for our facilities compared to just looking at maintaining or updating our systems? If, if we're, if we are apples to apples on costs, why, why would we not look at educational adequacy? Why wouldn't we look at what we can give our kids for the same amount of money that, that we're going to be giving our kids for the next 50 years?
That's going to be the job of school board. This committee was asked to bring information so they could look at that and talk to the community about what the community wants to look to support. But to, for us to be arguing about, we need a new building, I don't think it's innocent.
So when, when we reach the point, when we've looked at all these systems and we say, hey, it is the same amount of money as the last one. What is going to be your recommendation? Because it seems like your body's already made up.
Well, it seems like it's already made up, but I think you tried to.
I've been on the radio for three rounds of this, I've seen it all.
Well, the square foot would be the same as the last time, it would be more.
I, I prepared some comments, which is purpose of this conversation, which I'd like to read. It's recognized our school facilities are in critical need of substantial improvement. No question about that. The district, with the encouragement of our, of the facilities committee, has engaged an architectural consultant and an engineering consultant to evaluate our existing facilities and make recommendations how they can possibly be modified to meet the needs of the school district. A preliminary architectural concept has been developed that will increase the, the existing combined, combined facility's square footage by over 10,000 square feet. Also, evaluation of the existing mechanical, electrical systems and the building envelope of both the high school, middle school and Mills Lawn school as they completed. Information presented by our architectural and maintenance plan advisor consultant suggests that pricing for the upgraded facilities to meet the long-term needs of the district to be in the range of $23 million. And what's included in that is new construction at $450 a square foot, the $3 million and the $2 million plus for the mechanical system replacements, and, um, building envelope for both buildings at $10 million. That totaled about $23 million. Okay? This includes both the deep renovations and new construction. If you apply a 25% contingency factor to that accounting for unanticipated and unaddressed needs that suggest a potential project cost in the range of $30 million. Okay? This is preliminary information and it indicates that the facilities committee is on the right track as far as pursuing a permanent improvement plan. A permanent improvement plan will also enable the district to address critical facility issues on a more timely basis. Uh, in a timely manner on an incremental basis, rather than wait for the designing destruction of a new school, completion of which would be as long as five years in the future. Therefore, I'm suggesting that any consideration of new K-12 schools be set aside while we concentrate on the task at hand. The last attempt to pass a levy for a new $35 million K-12 school was defeated by an overwhelming majority of the community. Issues that weighed on the minds of the community included cost, disposition of the Mills Lawn property, and environmental cost of abandoning existing facilities. The project proposed in 2021 is the construction of a new 105,000 square foot K-12 facility at an estimated cost of $35 million to replace two buildings with a combined square footage of 122,000 square feet, which is a 9% decrease in size of our existing combined facilities, which area is previously addressed. The cost of that smaller facility today would be $47 million based on $450 a square foot, previously mentioned by, by Mike. If we choose to build a new K-12 facility of comparable size to our existing combined facilities, we're talking about $55 million. A deep renovation and new construction project would address previously identified issues that weighed on the minds of the community during the previous levy, levy attempt. Project costs will be lower, including operation and maintenance. The disposition of Mills Lawn property goes away and reuse of the existing facilities with reduced speed of new building materials and significant energy usage improvements will lessen the school's environmental footprint. The goal of this effort in which we're engaged is to develop a plan which meets the needs of the district and which the community will support at full. Without that support, our effort is for nothing.
Yes. I agree with the 47 million. The number and the renovation based on the 300 square foot and these new additions that are there is about 42 million.
That's not correct. I, I, I.
You look at the.
No, okay. I'm agreeing.
The renovations shown on Mike's drawings is 60. The deep renovations for, uh, for each building, one is about 60%, the other one is 40%. You can't apply $300 to the whole building. Is that correct, Mike?
Do you sell over the $9 million of state reimbursement? I guess that, that's my only comment. I, I don't necessarily disagree with what you're saying. But again, I'm going to look back to what I said at the very beginning. I was told money was the issue. So leading this district, I gave two solutions. One is that we participate in the ALP program and get a 26% credit. And whether, whether we think Mills Lawn is valuable, and I know we all do, you can't, it's like we have to decide what we want. If we want to keep that asset, then we have to realize our costs are going to be higher. But we can't want to keep that asset, pay less money, address our buildings, and, and so it's like no matter how we come at it, you know, at first I think, oh, it's money. So here's some ideas, oh, no, it's not money, maybe it's this, I don't know. So Jerry, it's not that I disagree with you, but if the community wants to pay 30, 35, 40 million dollars to keep two renovated buildings that I hear are going to be like new, okay, you know, I, I'm not sure that would be my first choice because I keep hearing money. But I, that's all I want to say, that this does, we, we do not qualify for this. And I believe Oakwood got a waiver because they had, they were an ALP project. That 18 million dollars was an ALP project because it's a beautiful 1920s building. While these buildings are very nostalgic, I don't know that any of us would say that they're beautiful. They have a lot of nostalgia.
They have a point, huh, Terry? That if we got 27%, we built a $47 million school that got 27%, or 26% from the state, it'd still be a $34 million project.
Now, sure. I, I mean, all I'm saying is that, that's what we had before, that was the offer, and the community did not accept that, that's all I'm saying.
And if we did that, we'd reduce the size of our building by 10%.
I.
As we come up with additional money.
I understand that.
We have a.
I'm sorry, we've been arguing like this, you know, but let's.
Cost is a consideration. I mean, that, that is a consideration. That's something that Mr. Roth pointed out, that maintenance cost. When I look at two campuses, I, I just know that one campus is cheaper, but if we're choosing to do two campuses, we are increasing that budget. We currently have, we currently spend about $375,000 a year on maintenance, outside maintenance, it's not including our personnel. Include our personnel, we're $900,000 a year, that's from the general fund. We have, we do have a permanent improvement fund that brings in $130,000 a year, roughly, and half of that is obligated to debt payments for the track. So I have $60,000, $65,000 a year for, for permanent improvements. That's, that's my budget. And you can hear these millions, everything, everything is in the millions. So with my budget for permanent improvement right now, I can't address almost as, you know, we're, we're talking about very minor things that can be addressed with a permanent improvement. Anything above and beyond, so we're spending 375 currently on maintenance. But there's things like, I said, well, you want the good news or the bad news? Well, the, the good news is we're only spending about, you know, 50 to 75,000 a year on age back maintenance. The bad news is we don't have air conditioning in our gymnasium, you know, stuff like that. So our system's very out-of-date. Cheapest thing to do is move ahead and fix it as it breaks. That's the cheapest thing to do. So anything above and beyond is going to cost more money. And the budget for that doesn't exist until the vote for it exists. So that's why you got to vote for the renovation and the levy. You got to vote for the new building, the levy. There is no budget until the money is there to pay for it. $60,000 doesn't buy it. That's the reason that we didn't put the permanent improvement fund up for renewal this year. We didn't know, we didn't know, we wanted to have these conversations. Um, one mill, you have $35 for your $100,000 home, so feel free to multiply that by your home value. One mill in Yellow Springs brings in $150,000. Now, the movies, that, that number's going to move up every year, it's a moving target. But $150,000 still doesn't touch a lot of these issues. So a, the idea of a levy that's going to be sizable enough to address these over time, you're talking about, it's still like two, three million dollars a year, I, I don't, I don't really know, but it's still a significant million increase as opposed to, this is why I am definitely not, you know, let's not try to get $2 million a year and spend that every year. Also getting contractors to, uh, projects are all running long, you got to follow up, every single project you will follow up on. So if you try to do one project a year, a year, you'd be lucky to get one and a half of them every, every, you know, every two years. So either way, the budget doesn't exist until we. Uh, mother, what that plan is and looking at all these costs is why can I like to explore all the costs? What's the cost now? What's the local share? What's going to be the cost in the future of every plan that can be discussed?
The ultimate decision, whether I have a new school or a, uh, a refurbished school is up to the school board. The purpose of this committee is to give an alternative to a new school. We know what a new school will cost based on square footage. We know what a new school will cost based on square footage. We're, we're spinning our wheels if we're constantly talking about the new school. That's not the charge of this committee. The end numbers indicate that as a viable option, we need to concentrate our efforts on a refurbishment plan to present to the school board so they can decide whether they want to pursue a new school or a refurbished school. That's the, that's the purpose of this committee. To constantly be having this discussion about the new school, that's not what we're here to do. That's the school board's, that's the school board's decision. Our job is to come up with a plan which we feel will serve the needs of the district and put a cost on it and give it to the school board to make the decision.
It was five till nine, so I just want to let people know that. I see Scott's hand up, and then his hands up over here, too. So.
I'll try and be brief. I would, I would take exception to one point as I know that technically the school board will make the decision. Ultimately, I think we all know that it would be the voters that make the decision. The school board is not likely to put something out there that they think the voters will not approve. And so I, we've got to be mindful of that as well. I don't want to get into weeds about this. I'm not advocating a particular approach, one way or the other. I would like to signal off this gentleman's comment earlier that I think what we need to do is we need to, we need to get seriously in depth about this stuff, and we're going to have to put together solid numbers that we can arm the school board to make that decision of when to go to the public with. I believe I'm on this committee because of my experience with, with, A, a permanent improvement plan that we implemented in Centerville, and I was the administrator there, and also because I have some understanding of school finance and how that works. And I guess I need to say that, uh, it, we did not implement a permanent improvement plan in Centerville because it was less expensive. It was more expensive, and we knew it, and we did it because politically that was what we could get the voters to agree with. We had vast needs, and I, there are a million reasons not to compare Yellow Springs with Centerville or Oakwood for that matter either. But the fact of the matter was that we had a lot of needs, very similar to what we're dealing with here, maybe not as extreme. We needed roofs, we needed windows, we needed air conditioning, we needed all that stuff. And the reason that we eventually came to a permanent improvement plan was because people were not, we wanted to build new. It was less expensive, but the, the voters would not stand for having their students reassign to different school buildings and redistrict them. And they said, no, we'd rather pay more to have you renovate the buildings we, we've got, fix them up, add on to them. And so we did that. We added on to every last building in the district, all 11 of them. And we spent a lot of money. I'm not saying it was bad or good, but that was, those were the economic realities of it. We did it with an open, with clear eyes and an open mind, and that's what people wanted to do, and that's what we did. We were able to sell that plan, but you need a lot of detail. You need a lot of detail. You need to be able to say, yeah, we looked at this, yes, we looked at that, yes, we looked at all these things, and here's what we decided to do, and here's why. I hope that our, our problem with the last two levies has not been that people simply don't want to support the schools. I really hope that that's not what our problem was. I hope the problem was poor communication or suboptimal communication, a lot of misinformation, bad karma, you know, horrible chi, I don't know what, I don't know what all, but I, I'm hoping that those are the problems that we faced and that we can do something positive here to, to, to turn this thing around and get us back on the right track because there once was a time when there were two school districts that no one would argue unequivocally supported their, their schools, and one of them was Oakwood and the other one was Yellow Springs. And I'd like to see us return to that. So I'm for diving into this to whatever extent we've got to dive into it. Let's, 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 let's get it done. Students deserve it.
I want to ask Mike, um, next steps if you, you heard this whole discussion tonight, next steps that you can see helping us move in the direction of developing permanent improvement plans here.
Comments or direction on the September 20th draft? There were bits of teachers' comments, what can we do to make that better? Did I overshoot on the size? Are we, you know, is it too much? Did I miss anything? And then once that gets settled down, Mike and I, I won't speak for you, but we can team together and come up with a pathway. Giving us some guardrails on budget would be helpful, like for example, setting something like, hey, we know our debt capacity is this, right? So we could save ourselves months of time if you just come to us with a plan that falls underneath their debt capacity as a max. Will provide us options, you know, at different price points within a certain range. That would, that would give me and I a lot of direction. We'd say this committee probably wants a back and forth. Like if you, and I'm just making up some, if you said, hey, give us a 15, 20, 25 million dollar option, something like that, some word of magnitude would be really helpful. And then we come back with that information and say, for, at these price points, this is what we recommend you do.
So, um, we need to get more input from teachers. We need to work with that in a way.
I, I'm not sure if you want, if you want me to go back and talk about the teachers specifically, but.
They've left comments. I mean, I think in a summary, certainly for Mills Lawn, you better, you better touch every, every classroom. So, but I think it certainly wouldn't hurt, but you know, you can, can contact Jack and make it, and then Brian can edit and edit out.
Maybe another round of that. I read a lot of special comments, and my hunch is that the square footage is probably there, and we just maybe can do a better job of maybe fighting or settling out or.
I don't think they had an opportunity to hear. I think they were just going on.
They need you to talk to them.
I think they were going on, looking at a piece of paper and kind of figuring it out on their own, um, and not really hearing the specifics. The only thing that I want to have caution on is when every time we go to the teachers and ask for feedback and ask, you know, what do they need? We are at risk of losing teachers because at some point in time, they might not feel heard, and then we're risking losing teachers. You know, if somebody keeps saying, hey, what do you need? What do you need? What's best for students? What's best for your profession? You're the experts in the buildings, not users, experts in the buildings, because that's what we want school for. And they keep asking and asking and asking. It's dangerous. It's a dangerous game, I'm saying.
So what are you suggesting? Should we go meet with the teachers? I mean, I agree with what you said, but I'm just asking, is there a way to do it? If it's not.
Well, I think we have a lot of information already.
I think we, I think we have a lot of information. Um, I, I just, I, you know what? I'm going to say Keneta and, and Brian will probably be able to have a better feel for that if, if bringing someone in and explaining it again and then asking, because they've done these surveys, some of them three times now, multiple times each time, I, I just, I really, I, I'm, I'm really concerned about continuing to go to the teachers because I'm afraid it's exhausting. It's exhausting for me to sit here, you know, after last year and then sitting here again and then hearing it and hearing it and hearing it because we are in the buildings for hours. I'm in that building more than, sometimes I'm even at my own house. So I think it's just exhausting, and I don't want to exhaust our teacher.
What about exhausting? What about, um, exhausting?
Well, you know, it's just.
Not feeling heard or the time that it takes.
I think not feeling heard. I think hearing some of the things, saying things, and I'm not speaking on my behalf, but I, I think I can speak for a lot of the staff members, and so we're hearing the same thing over and over and over again. And when we're hearing it, we're also seeing it every single day in the classrooms or when we're out to recess or when we're working in our offices. It's just a constant reminder. I mean, just imagine sitting in your own home and having someone tell you over and over again and showing you pictures, proof, like, hey, your windows, hey, the cracks in your brick, hey, roof needs fixed. And being a person that maybe doesn't have the money to fix those things, it can be exhausting. That's the only thing I can relate it to. You know, if I was sitting in my own home and somebody was telling me those things over and over again, and then I'm obviously looking at them over and over again, that would be exhausting.
I'm just curious for my own reference, who at this table works on the bill?
Two, two central offices.
Yeah, I mean, generally, like even if your office isn't there, you're in and out, you're going, so where you.
I work, I work for close.
Well, what I'd like to suggest is if you guys think about it, and Terry, and then Mike, you know, try to respond to those, those concerns the teachers have. However, is the best way to do it, but I'm not sure if you guys can figure that out. And then if you do that, do you, before December meeting, do you think you would, it would be sense for you and Mike, Michael Murdoch, to start, you know, what do you suggest, 15, 20, 25? I don't know that we should decide that, but maybe the school board, we should ask about this, those kind of.
I think it'd be an appropriate discussion.
That's a big open discussion, yeah. To, to give us that.
Yeah, and, and you're thinking that for the December meeting, you would have to work through it?
I'm not, I don't know. That's what I'm wondering, how.
They'd be pretty quick. You've got to start real quick, Mike. It gives us the month of November to hear it out.
Thank you.
I would rather just kind of keep it a little bit.
I'll say grace at Thanksgiving if you've done by December. Okay. Mike, when you're looking at the heating and stuff, you know, you said it's life for life going back, but when you originally spoke, you talked about possibly grants, funding, whatever, that might get better systems than what we have. We possibly drove that into one of the mixes or it's like sidebar of, you know, for like another million, we get up this amount of, you know, heat, we'd save it over three years.
So at the Indian Hill project, we included an energy project in that, and, you know, additional $5 million of building was basically created for the, the program.
I was, I was thinking the committee, um, we want to kind of give input really on your drawing, the people that aren't experts in building. So I'm wondering if both Michael and Mike, we can set, committee members can set ideas that they have, put that into the next two, three weeks, if you're ready before you guys get to.
Maybe we should send it through you so that it's one person rather than.
Right, but they are even there like, I have questions about sunshine here. Sometimes. We're good. It'll be okay. So, so what I'm suggesting is that we put in writing suggestions of questions that we have.
Suggestions to the, what, or the, you know. Can we, can we just make it a common document that everybody can ask you so we can all see them in real time and clarify?
I'm not sure of that, but.
There's no sunshine that applies to facilities committee per our meeting. We asked this one, months ago.
There's not.
Correct.
I'm with this, correct? Okay.
Well, here's the thing.
But, but we don't need.
If we just have, if we're just putting in questions.
We're just putting questions, it's going in one direction.
If we're not answering the question.
If you're, yeah, if we're not, if we're not discussing it, no, you're absolutely right, so. Okay. So I'd like to give 10 minutes for folks out here and, um, like, how many people would like to say? One, two, three, four, five. Okay. So why don't we put two minutes, two minutes each?
I have a statement, I have a question. I don't know who the authority is at the table, but understanding that we don't have the numbers yet, right? Is that, that's my first question. We don't have the numbers, but are we expecting the numbers by December? Is that what you were saying?
We can do that.
The only number that I've heard that's been on the record, I, quote unquote, is an estimate of $300 per square foot for deep renovations, and I was told less than, but not given a specific figure for targeted renovation. So I just want to make sure, I heard like some, and that's not including the maintenance number that you, uh, not $432,000.
Yeah, you can't find off, you can find some numbers in there.
But I heard some other numbers, and I just want to make sure that I don't report numbers that aren't like official numbers.
So my one sentence answer to that is that we don't have total numbers yet. We have numbers for some parts. We do not have all the parts yet.
And, and when those numbers come, they will come from the, the mics.
Cancel.
Okay. All right. That's all I wanted to say.
Yeah, Dave Miller, um, he has three children in the district, and I'm an educator in Beaver Creek. Been through deep renovations there, um, been through renovations in California with classrooms that I had, um, in Silicon Valley area. I think the teacher would be very happy with a deep renovation process. It, it, my classroom in California was fantastic after it was done, renewed. The re, I, the original plan, 2016, was what I favored. I favored renovations in the first place. I think it was on the central location of like the high school where it was, um, like seats and like facilities and arts facilities, too, enhanced and, well, actually on campus. But having said that, um, my biggest concern is teacher, how we retention, but getting the best teachers. I applied here when I came from California. I wasn't super impressed at that time given, and I'd be less likely to move here from where I'm at than if I was a teacher. I, I probably wouldn't even look at the district in current state, not because the educators aren't fantastic, not because the administrators aren't wonderful. I happen to know they are. Things they've done for my children have been just amazing, I think, from the bottom of my heart, but, um, you know, as an educator, I'm currently horrible with classrooms, not really happy with where I'm at. My, my morale is down just because we're distanced from, you know, office, distanced from, there's a lot of reasons why I don't appreciate the situation I'm in, and I can liken that to being in those, a lot of them being in a building that's old and dark and air conditioning, I currently have air conditioning in this classroom. But I think that, you know, that is a huge factor, and, and if we're going to make this school district and the children ultimately, um, to give them the options that they need and that they deserve to be educated properly and to enjoy all the benefits that we can provide for them, um, we need to think about teacher retention and part of that is making facilities that teachers want to come to and, and can be proud of.
Thank you. Next.
Um, yes. She asked somebody where they, didn't they feel heard? And it kind of goes back to what I said when I spoke a couple months ago. I've been sitting here watching this, and you all have been talking to each other and at each other for months, but the people that you really need to be hearing and speaking to are the voters in this community, and they have asked very clearly in these two levies if they want to know what renovation would cost and improvement would cost. It's kind of like I had to go buy a car that I didn't expect to have to buy because I was hit on the main drag in Yellow Springs at a time when it's not a good time to buy a car. And the voters want to know how much they get for this much money, how much they get for this much money, how much they get for that much money. And I promise you, I would have liked to have been able to afford a Lexus with all the bells and whistles, but I wound up driving a Hyundai because it had basically what I needed and what I couldn't afford, and that is what the people in this community want to know. You know, I didn't get the cheapest car out there. I had to push myself a bit, and that is what this community needs to know. This board is willing to bring back to the community the facts and information so they can decide what they want to get, not based on all your arguments about why building better, the community has to decide whether new, and, and we need. Community has to decide whether new, and we need that information, we need to be heard.
Sorry, I'll just say, I think we're only considering Hyundai's here. I don't think anyone's talking about the Lexus. And two, the whole square footage conversation, I, I think there's, all square footage is not created equal. And really efficiently planned square footage, you can have less in numbers. So that conversation feels a little off. The total number, right, you can have a three thousand square foot house that is designed for you and live much more comfortably than an eighteen hundred square foot house that is designed well for you. I guess the only thing, other thing I would say is that there are many costs that are not dollars. And my, as a parent, my biggest concern with renovations that take a long time is displacement of kids. And honestly, I will vote for just about anything that will give our kids and teachers what they deserve, unless it displaces our kids for extended periods of time. I will not vote for that. If they have to be in trailers for long periods of time, or I, they, our kids and our teachers have gone through so much these past couple years and displacement for any longer period of time, whether because the electrical goes out or because we're renovating for half of a year and they can't be in the building, is, is a huge cost to me. It has an actual dollar cost too, because we have to rent someplace or get a, you know. So I hope those numbers are being worked in these next two weeks.
Hi Cecily, I'm a resident, and I just wanted to kinda piggyback off of what Scotty said. We could just, as a, as a resident, as a taxpayer, get a short list of, these are the things that need to be fixed right away, and that's what it's gonna cost. I think I have a better visual, I think other people might have a better visual of what those things are. You know, the importance, sure, the teachers need to be comfortable, but the kids do as well. We're all concerned about safety, we want facilities that are engaging, that they feel comfortable in. And I just think that will kind of meet in the middle and give people something to really kind of wrap their arms around and feel comfortable with making a good decision about voting for it because it's the right thing, but it's also kind of still within a budget. This is reasonable, before just throwing all the money out there and saying this is what we need, and new, 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 I don't think that would...
I just wanted to make a comment that it was brought up, just that obviously everybody cares about the students. And I just think there's a difference between caring about the students and prioritizing the students. And I just think, you know, when you're alone, sitting with yourself for everyone that's on this committee, think about where are you prioritizing the students and, and how you're looking at all of that.
Sean, do you have a question?
Yeah, sure, so, you know, I've always been neutral on the question of parents' renovation versus building new. I just support, as this gentleman here said, just like showing your work, like getting the numbers. And that's why I really support the format of this committee with users and experts. And, you know, the fact that you guys clearly have some conflict competitiveness is like possibly positive if you use that, if you drive that competitiveness to just drilling down into the details and doing your work really well to provide the, the school board with all the information that they need. You know, and I guess I also wanted to say, if the school board can provide price points and that is the way to sort of provide different options to the school board is, okay, here's what we can get at fifteen, twenty, twenty-five, and that helps, or if you wanna do, well, here is the low, medium, high, whatever is easiest. I just think that there, I think that the bringing up of building new is on point. It is, it is relevant to when you're, like, you can talk about that while talking about renovating here and there without getting off of topic of, well, and then here is what we would get if we do renovations. Just as, you know, you can develop an understanding of total cost. We understand that if you, that these plans, to do a permanent improvement plan, these deep renovations, like after you're done with that price tag, that's like, it's not like, and then you have to replace it after seven years. Like, you're going, like, the intention would be to maintain the buildings indefinitely, never to throw them away if you go that route, you're not paying twice. So I think that basically you're all making good points, but then you're objecting to each other's good points that you don't need to object to, you're both right.
Okay, I'm gonna cut too long, thank you. All right, thanks so much to everybody who's here, it's past time to go home, so I'm trying to call...